May 13th, 2015. Want to help me with the roll call?
Sure. Tom Clooney?
Here.
Laura Gandia, President. Rich Riley?
President.
John Regan?
Here.
All other members are absent.
Okay.
Do you want to appoint someone?
Yep. We will appoint Tom to the Board this evening. Alternate, but he's filling in for somebody who's not able to make it tonight. I am expecting one more member. Al Gilbo. I did speak with him last week, so it's my understanding that he should be here. I don't know if you're familiar with... There he is, perfect. Now we've got five. Al is now present.
He's taller than we were expecting here.
Have you been in front of the zoning board before?
I have not.
Pretty straightforward. Nothing to be, you know, too worried about or scared of. I'm sure you've worked with Kevin. You've seen the application. There are specific questions on that application that you are required to respond to. I know, based on what's in the file here, that you have done so. What we're going to do is, once we get started, when Kevin gets back with the other copies, you'll just start presenting your information. Go through the criteria, your responses to those questions. Present any material you want to present to us. We may ask some questions.
Can I get a copy of the one I submitted to you?
Do you want the whole package?
No, just my...
This is only application.
Yep, coming up. This is a Butters, which I don't think he needs to worry about. Then the rest is letters from a Butters. At some point, what we'll do is we'll ask for public input. Anybody who wants to speak in favor of your application, or anybody who wants to speak against your application, we'll take that input. We may go back and forth with some additional questions, so forth and so on. Once we get through to a point where the Board is, you know, you've presented, said everything you want to say, we think we've heard everything we need to hear, we close public input, and we start deliberating. It's here in public. You hang around while we're doing all of that. We may have further questions for you, so at that point, we could even ask more questions. But ultimately, we get to a point where we want to vote, and what you're looking for is at least three members to approve your applications. As long as you get that, then your application for a variance is approved. If you don't get the three votes, it's denied. If it's approved, you still have to wait to 30 days. That's for an appeal period, in case anybody out there who's watching or here today that is, feels that we erred in our decision in any way, they have an opportunity to appeal, a 30-day window to make that appeal. After the 30 days goes by, you're able to proceed working, obviously, with the building department. Any questions?
What about if I'm denied? Do I have a right to appeal?
You do. Again, there are certain requirements in order for that appeal to be granted. The first request for an appeal would come to us. What we're looking for in the event of an appeal would be some sort of new evidence, something that says, here's why you were wrong in your decision. We would then, if we agree that there is some new information there, we would grant the request for an appeal. We start the process for a hearing all over again, because notice has to go out to the public. So it's like another month later, you come in for the next hearing, the appeal hearing. If we deny it, your request for an appeal, then you still have the, a right to appeal to the district courts, in this case Nashville. Did I say that right?
Yes. Superior.
Superior Court.
Your class.
Okay. Okay. So it doesn't necessarily have to be new evidence if you want to, if you did appeal or decide, it could just be, you know, where you feel we misinterpreted something. Again, just compelling reasons to hear an appeal.
Okay. Thank you.
Think happy thoughts, though.
Yeah. With that being said, if there's... Yes, would you mind, please, read that into the record?
This is case number 2015-01. The name of the applicant is Paul S. Seco.
Seco.
Seco. 24 Pearson Street, Litchfield, New Hampshire. The owner is the same. Location of the property, 24 Pearson Street, map 18, lot 98. A variance is requested from Article 500, Section 502.03 of the zoning ordinance to permit an approximately 26-by-28 garage with living space above an approximately 12-by-12 breezeway to be constructed. The addition proposed would be 40.7 feet from the public right-of-way, Class 6 road not yet built, Morrel Street.
And then the denial letter?
This is a letter from the code enforcement officer to the applicant. It reads, "After reviewing your permit for an addition to your home at 24 Pearson Street, it was found that the addition would be approaching 9.3 feet into the 50-foot setback of the unconstructed street named Morrel Street. Your permit is denied for not meeting the requirements of Article 500, Section 502.03. You may request a variance from the reference Article 500, Section 502.03, from the zoning Board of Adjustment. If you have any questions, please contact my office."
Okay. That being said, you may, if you wouldn't mind, just come on up here and then state your name for the record, and then dive right in.
All right. My name is Paul Seco.
Address?
24 Pearson Street, Litchfield.
Thank you.
My wife and I would like to put an addition onto our home, and in order to do the addition in the way that we would like to be able to do it, we need to encroach 9.7 feet into the setback on a road that's only on paper at this point. The reason for it is to, my mother-in-law, who's, my father-in-law passed away in January, and she's not able to stay where she lives now due to financial constraints, and so we're doing this in order to help my mother-in-law have some space that she can feel that's her own, and as she gets older, she can age in place and not have to worry about the financial stresses, et cetera. So we've talked about it, doing it, and I actually had, I have two daughters and a son, and my two daughters moved out last fall, so I thought maybe I was finally out of the need of having an addition, and then my father-in-law unfortunately passed away, so here I am. I think if you look at the pictures that I submitted, the photos I submitted, just about every one of the houses of the pictures I submitted are on the street that I live on, Pearson Street, and they show basically an addition similar to what I'm looking to add on to my home. So it would be very appropriate to the neighborhood, and it would, however, it would, you know, it certainly wouldn't decrease values. And even at 40 feet, I think the setback, I believe if I understand it correctly, that I'm still 40 feet from the edge of the road that's not built yet, and I would actually be 53 feet away from the center line of the road if it's built. So I think, you know, I meet the spirit of the law by, you know, the zoning ordinance by still being well set back from the road. Again, it's not fair.
So this would be a corner lot if the road were there?
Yes, it would be a corner lot, correct. Yeah.
How long has the road been proposed? Is it a new road, or is it a...
Eighty-six. Eighty-four.
Well, I bought the home in 92, and it was then.
One of the first pages of Sawmill.
So it was proposed in 86?
Yeah.
Want to look at the pictures? So exhibit every one of those?
Oh, you can lump them together.
Lump them together? That would be nice.
I also have another letter that I wasn't able to submit with the, when I submitted the application, from another one of my Butters.
Okay. Good.
Where is Pearson? Sawmill, right? You said Sawmill?
It's right after, so if you go down Albuquerque.
You pass one of them, is that left?
Ah, okay.
That's not there anymore, is it?
Fill down.
Fill down.
Write it.
I'm five minutes...
Do you know where the new Cougar Park is?
Yeah.
Sawmill's park?
The tennis courts there, yeah.
Also the vision on that side of Albuquerque?
Okay.
Is going to set it that way.
Okay.
So it looks as though I have three letters from a Butters.
Correct. The other Butter is, owns the two pieces of land behind me that goes all the way down to Route 3, and I have no way of knowing how to get contact with it, but it's kind of a corporate, kind of a trust that owns the land.
That's interesting you should say that.
The three Butters are the one to my right, the one to my left, and the one directly across the street who signed the letter. Again, my land, you know, a bunch of lots behind me that goes, that runs all the way to, you can see it on the, that runs all the way back to Route 3.
All right, well, while Laura's looking at those photos, I'll, so each one of the letters are, it looks like a form letter.
Yes.
That's been signed, so it's the same substance, just signed by different people. First one's dated 5/12/2015. Name on it is Tracy D. Simone Green, 22 Pearson Street, Litchfield, New Hampshire. We, I, and one of the Butters of Paul and Colleen Seco. Am I saying that right? Seco.
You had to get them before you told me Seco was...
High school must have been fun, though.
24 Pearson Street. He was waiting for that one, man. That was rehearsed. They have reviewed the proposed addition.
Especially when I fly a lot. Mr. Seco, please come to the front of the line.
Is there a Seco on board?
There's a Seco on board, though.
All right. "We, I, and one of the Butters of Paul and Colleen Seco, 24 Pearson Street. They have reviewed the proposed addition that they would like to add to their existing home, and I have no objections to the proposed addition and support them in their efforts to update their home." Signed by Tracy D. Simone Green. Same letter, also signed by Donald Blaze of 21 Pearson Street, Litchfield, New Hampshire, dated 4/12/2015. Same letter dated 5/12/2015, signed by Roger Antonowitz.
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 That should be 4/12, shouldn't it?
Yes. Well, let's just, is this the one you just handed?
No.
No?
The first one was the one I just handed.
That was 5/12?
Did you have anyone that didn't support you?
Again, I don't know who, I don't know who the Butter is behind me.
Yeah, we, we sent out certified letters, and they were returned for whatever mailing address we have listed for that particular Butter, so whatever mailing address the town has listed for that particular Butter anyways. No problem. We're just required to send it.
It must get a tax bill.
Yes.
Yep. So these will also be placed into the file?
Everybody look at these, yeah?
Everybody look at the pictures as well?
This is going to be marked as Exhibit A, 14 pictures of houses on Pearson Street.
Perfect, yes, please.
You the only house without a two-car garage?
I think there's like only three or four, three left in the house.
There's two all there.
Yeah, three, right? There's three left.
Two, two on the left, down there.
Yeah.
So you had better get this done, then.
So I'm just trying to maintain the standards of the neighborhood.
So it doesn't show where the driveway is going to go.
Oh, from the front or the side?
The driveway is not changing.
The driveway won't change?
No, driveway is existing. And actually, the driveway goes down and splits into two cars now, so it'll be literally...
I don't think so.
You're putting a box around it?
We might patch it in, yeah. We're building a garage in that lineup of the driveway.
Your house is not in this group of pictures, correct?
No, it's not. No, because it doesn't have a garage and a breezeway on it.
Do you have a picture of your house now?
I have a picture of my house.
The driveway's not on the lot, is it?
I don't know if I have a picture of my house. That's an interesting question.
So where is the driveway located now?
I could draw it.
No. Driveway comes in right through here now, right near this area, and just flares a little bit. He's going to be coming in here and doing the same thing this way. It's going to be the same curb cut.
So there's no garage, it just ends, the driveway just comes up and ends?
From right foot, right up to the garage.
So the curb cut won't come close to the corner?
Wait, to the, to the garage?
Now, the curb cut will be there, it is, it's still, we'll use the existing driveway, and this may help you.
So they're going to put a box on top of the existing parking spots for both cars?
Correct, this was what's happening.
Basically, yeah, basically, the driveway is here, and the house is here, right? If you will. Corner of the house ends here, so basically, when it comes out, it'll come out in front of the garage. We'll have to probably do a little pavement to come, to get to the garage, because this is at a slight angle.
Yeah.
Can you see that?
I can't.
So it's coming off of here, then?
Yeah, the front of Pearson. So the driveway cut is on Pearson?
Yes.
It has to be, right?
Well, there's no street, so, I mean, I don't propose to build Morrel Street. The Morrel Street is...
I might have to do that.
So what is Morrel Street now? Is that just woods?
Yes.
So all of this is woods?
Well, the other side of Morrel is there.
This right here is Morrel?
Yes, yeah.
But this is woods?
That's all woods.
And this is another existing house?
Correct.
That's built?
Yes.
That's the house there? And what number house is that?
That's 22.
22.
Just curious, how far away, how far away are they from Morrel? So you said, I'm kind of visiting what you, what you just described. There's a house over here.
That's what I'm trying to find.
Yes.
And are they, are they closed?
Oh, no, they're setback. They're probably, it's a split level, and I would say they're probably 50 or 60 feet. They're actually closer...
Well, they're at least 50.
They're at least 50 feet, but they're closer to the land than I am. You know what I'm saying? But they're, yeah, I think they would be 60 feet from the, you know, they're 60.
Worst-case scenario, okay? Their house is close, they want to put a garage on this side, that puts both garages pretty close together.
Right. Well, they couldn't do that, and it's a, it's a, they would be too close to do that. But it's also a split-level house with a garage under. So I think, when they lit, when they put that house on the lot, they knew that? So they probably set it closer to this side, so that if they wanted to put addition on the other side, it would be possible. Or back.
Because the garage is already there.
Exactly.
On this, on this side, on your side.
Right.
Got you.
Probably when the house, when my house was built, he probably, he thought he probably had enough room to put a breezeway garage, but he didn't take consideration a 50-foot setback, right? Because it's normally 20 feet.
Yeah.
So this is all wooded right here?
Yes.
So it's not even like paved, there's nothing that would...
I'm improved, it's woods.
So my question for you is, is that not built because it's a possibility that there's wetland there? And maybe that's why it's still just a paper road?
All the road that's up.
Yeah, Kevin walked out, so...
I mean, I live at 20 Pearson, and my, what I think it is, is so the land's not landlocked behind us, so it's an easement. To continue a road to access all that, there's 100 acres there. So there's no wetlands.
There's no wetland?
No.
Okay. Just curious.
Yes.
Yeah. Say your name. What'd you...
Jim Bonin.
Jim Bonin.
Yeah, there's no wetlands.
I only brought that up because I...
Was that 20 Pearson Street?
Yeah.
Okay.
So this is the people that, right here, way in the back?
Uh, that's a good question. The trust, the neighbors that said you couldn't reach or didn't know?
The one that's on the land right here?
Yeah. And that piece of land starts there and goes all the way to Route 3.
Free 8, yeah?
Free 8. It's one big wooded piece of land.
I was thinking going this way would head into the Sawmill Fields. No?
No.
No, it feels a bit this way, wouldn't it?
Maybe this will help. Question?
I was going to hope he'd use television there.
See this here? This is where the house was located here tonight, Paul. It's right here. Notice that there's a black line?
Yeah.
This is a property line. You got a piece here, and you got a piece there.
And those two pieces?
Are all by the same.
And they go to Albuquerque?
Go up Albuquerque.
I mean, not Albuquerque, 38, sorry.
They're all the way down to Route 38, just north of the Passat County, Gulf Coast, open. Okay?
Just, hmm.
That's the Passat County, it's here. These two pieces of land go all the way down to here. It's all the same family.
Where's Chabon's house?
Chabon's is over here.
Okay.
Midway, as it's called, because that's what it used to be called. Right here, across the there. This is where the property line, here, same trust, here and here. This is one of the...
One of the stripes.
It's the Hales. Candace Hale, and her daughter, and her grandchildren all belong there.
That's where the new house is being built.
That's one of the grandchildren, Josh's. And that's on another lot, that's over here.
Well, so that's the land.
Okay.
Okay. And this is Hale's here.
Where's, where's the church's property on 38?
Church on Route 38, right there.
Okay. All right, I know the piece now.
This is the piece of the 58, we just subdivided out of this piece here, that's being renovated now, that one house, remember, oh?
Yeah.
It's taken all winter. Brian Smith always has some of the coldest weather to work in. There's a question on how far the, how far this house was from the right-of-way. According to this one here, I'm over, I'm about 90 feet away from the right-of-way. But they have room for a garage, so, okay?
A garage next to the garage?
That house has pushed more to the left side of the lot.
Yeah. Good.
Thank you, Kevin.
You're more than welcome. I know you guys don't look at maps like this every day, and can't get.
I do.
That's true.
So, have we gone through each criteria?
No, we have not.
Let's go through the criteria, then.
Want me to read them?
You can read verbatim if you like. It's all a matter of getting this all into the record, ideally, you know. A lot of times, we get the condensed version written. You might expand on them if you feel, I mean, obviously, you're trying to, you're trying to sway the jury here.
There's areas from up contrary to the public interest, because the proposed addition, the end result would be typical of other houses that already exist in the neighborhood, and it's, in reality, most of the other homes in the neighborhood already have this addition added. The spare, the ordinance observed, because the proposed addition would be approximately, still be 43, 53 feet from the center of the road itself, if the road is ever constructed. And again, there's still, there would be still enough woods between the addition and the actual right-of-way that would still be maintained. So even if the road was put in there after this addition, I still would have enough property to maintain a strip of woods. So it wouldn't have, you wouldn't have the sense of being too close to the road.
So it wouldn't be open? You'd still have woods between the building and the road?
Yeah.
Got you.
Yeah. Because even the road right-of-way, where they can, the town would come in and could go 10 feet beyond it, right? I'd still have woods between it.
Exactly.
Okay? Substantial justice is done, because the proposed addition would still follow the basic intent of the ordinance, and it's very similar to other houses on the street. I think that the intent of the ordinance was to keep houses from using too much of your land right up to the edge of a property line, and I would still be 40 feet, which in, in towns, 20-foot on a side setback, so I would still be double the standard setback. And indeed, if you drive around town, there are some houses that are a lot closer to roads that pre-existed the ordinance, right? The values of the surrounding properties are not diminished. Actually, I think the houses are diminished now, because I'm bringing, I'm dragging the value of the homes in the neighborhood down, because I don't have a garage and a breezeway.
This is the guy without the garage.
Yeah. The proposed addition would not diminish property values, would actually, I think, would increase values, as it would mimic other houses in the neighborhood, and certainly would be inappropriate construction, and et cetera. I do have a picture of what I, I don't know if I, this is what, I have a gambrel, so this is kind of the house that we've, driving around, we've looked at, and we've most admired so far, because we think it's appropriate, it fits in the side, huh?
That's my house.
So, and finally, literal enforcement of the provision to the ordinance resulted in unnecessary hardship, because, because when the house was built, it was placed in such a way to allow for an addition, our garage to be built, there's room for the garage, but not for a garage and attached room to allow access to the above-garage living space. The attached room will allow the space above the garage to be accessible from inside of the house, and connect new living space above the garage to the existing home, which is more desirable and what has become the norm for today's homes. The breezeway attached room will provide continuity between the existing kitchen and the living space above the garage, making it more accessible, and make it feel like more its part of the home. For the above reasons, I'm requesting a dimensional variance of approximately 10 feet to allow for the proposed addition. The proposed addition would still maintain an approximately 41-foot setback from the not-yet-constructed Class 4 road that exists only on paper. I guess I want to emphasize that. And the proposed addition would be very similar to the other homes in the area, and indeed, that exist now in the neighborhood.
Very good.
What space you have on the other side? Just curious.
Probably, I'm probably about, I'm actually probably about 20 feet to my property line there, maybe 30.
It says, it says 37.
Yeah, okay. I'm betting, I'm not good with judging that.
Well, but if, if the house were positioned 20 feet that way, you would have had plenty of space. If the, if the original dimensions of the house had this in mind, a breezeway and a garage.
Well, I think when this house...
He's about 17 feet before he gets into the, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Yeah. When the house was built, when the houses were built, I think breezeway garages weren't the thing, they just put garages on, so, you know, of course, nobody builds houses as small as mine now either.
Earlier, you mentioned, I think, a family member was moving in. That was part of the driving factor for the addition. There does, there isn't any mention here about an accessory dwelling unit. Is that what you're putting over the garage? None of that? No, no. So ADU doesn't come into this at all, as far as just the breezeway and a garage? It's what you look for?
No, breezeway and garage and living space over it for her.
So there is?
No kitchen, though. No, no, no.
It's a room. It's not going to want to...
We don't, I mean, she doesn't like to cook. I'm a chef.
Oh. Seco's a chef.
And frankly, no, I mean, and I mean, it's, it's, it's going to become, it'll become a family room, you know, eventually, and I, and we tend to have all the holidays at at my home, and, because, um, again, people, when you're a chef, you never stop being a chef. You know, that's like a life, that's like a life sentence. Um, so everybody comes to my house.
Yeah.
We need the space. Plus, gives me an excuse to finally get a garage.
There you go. It's, it's a room that you happen to put your, your mother into.
Exactly.
I have the battery if we need it.
Yeah.
No, we're good.
Not a, 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 like the other two I got.
Any other questions before we take a look for public input? All right, at this point, I'll ask for some public input. Do we have anybody who would like to speak in favor of the application? No, do we have any public out there who wants to speak against, or at all, about the Patriots fines? Well, okay, good. No, I don't want to go there. We'll be all night on Allen.
Go there.
All right, so we have no public input at this point. I see you reading.
I was reading.
You getting prepared for another question?
No. I, I, my thought process was, since the road is not in existence.
Process.
Right, but it's not, it's not a road. And the definition is, for a public right-of-way, does he even need a variance? So I was trying to define, find the definition.
Is it because of our definition and our own subdivision regulations for right-of-way?
Right, and that's what I was looking here, and in the state statute, it says proposed, so I was trying to help you, but.
Right. Oh, I tried to. She went to bed, man. I appreciate it. I would not have sent them here, okay?
I know, I was just looking. I was looking.
Oh, I was too.
All right.
Kevin, Kevin did, Kevin did actually check that for me, so. But I appreciate Laura, you doing that, I really do.
I missed a question, Laura.
Our ordinance talks about the, um, setback has to be fifty feet from public rates-of-way, and since it's proposed and not an actual road, I was thinking, it would need to be in front of us, because it's not an actual road, so I was trying to find the definition of right-of-way, and it does say, um, it's all present and proposed, so that's why he is here.
That was a recent change about four or five years, years ago, and legislative branch, because it was allowed, that was the third section, as if the right-of-way, Class Six roads and stuff like that, or types of right-of-ways. But this was classified as such for such, and that's why we're stuck with it.
Understood.
Okay. Any other questions on the board? Do we have any motions to close public input and deliberate?
I'll make a motion to close public input.
Al's second.
Your motion seconded by Al. All right. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All right, public input's closed, we're just going to talk about this. Uh, Al, can we move to a vote? Do we have any?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the variance of.
Uh, variance from LZO five oh two dot oh three setbacks.
Uh, nine point three feet, was it?
Of, um, I'm sorry. Yeah, nine point three feet, yes.
Be comfortable with that? Uh, we have a motion to approve the variance for nine point three feet. Any questions? Any? No? Any, all, any seconded?
Al's second.
We have a seconded. Let's take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Board's approved your request, you gotta wait the thirty days like we talked about, um, when you don't have an appeal. So you can work with Kevin, you'll get a notice from this, uh, board, um, basically just stating that your application's been approved. Uh, and really, that's it, no further public notices will go out after that.
Thank you. Let's hope they, let's hope Tom Brady gets a board like you guys. Thanks very much.
More than thirty days for you.
Yeah, really, huh?
Yeah. Give me a little bit more, few more dollars, too. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Kevin, don't leave.
All right, next on our list, really, is election of officers for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen term. We need a chairperson and a vice-chairperson. So, anybody want to?
I'll make a motion to nominate for Charlie S. Chair.
Second.
All right, I'll do it another year. Um, it's getting easy, where we only have one or two cases. Um, I, I'll make a motion if I could, um, well, do I, do I have to vote? We have a motion, um, I'm going to abstain on that, all those in favor?
Aye.
So four, zero, one, um, and I'm going to make a motion.
I don't get a vote on that.
You don't?
As an alternate, I don't get a vote.
If I appoint you, doesn't it?
Yeah.
You're a full serving member, actually.
But tonight, yeah, you can vote on everything.
Top of the food chain, guy.
Um, so I'm going to make a motion to nominate Laura as vice chair, if you're willing to do it now, but yeah. John's seconded right away. So, um, we have a vo, uh.
Same vote.
Motion and a seconded, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And abstaining?
One abstention. Okay, so we have our office, I have no other mail, I have no other business on my list.
We just got to finish Wordsmith in this.
Yep.
Or do we, would just take his verbatim?
I don't have a problem with that. Put everything you can do in time. I'll play with it tonight and tomorrow, after that, I'm in Portugal.
And I would, um, when that's being done, I think it's really important to note that there was no opposition at all from those abutters in the back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we've got the letters of support, too.
So do you want me to do any wording in this?
If you can. Whatever you want to do. It sounds like Al had something you wanted to talk about, so we got a few more minutes before we close it. Or you want to close?
We're going to close first.
And close the meeting, so that's not business. I don't have any other business, anybody else got business? No business, uh, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
You're making a motion to adjourn the meeting at seven thirty-five?
Seven thirty-five, seconded. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, meeting closed. If you don't mind, we can stop the recording or broadcast.